Is that okay? Doesn't bother you if I switch chairs, does it?
This was, this was Harper and Balling, so.
Yeah. Well, I'm just. So I'll, I'll move more farther closer to the first slide. Well, that's way better.
Like the legend?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
If I could have your attention, please, we're gonna get started now?
These are the existing.
Okay, and live streaming is on, Madam Deputy Clerk? Perfect? Okay, welcome everyone to tonight's Special Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'm Counselor Phil St. Jean Picton Ward. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. Tonight, we have, looks like, one deputation and at least eight comments from the audience. When we get to comments from the audience, I'll be asking counsel for an extension of the time for comments. But for now, we are here to discuss two, there are two items on the agenda, both regarding short-term accommodations. So, as I said, welcome everybody, and we shall move on with confirmation of the agenda. Could I have a mover and second for that, please? Counselor Prinsen and Counselor Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a Prinsen-Roberts motion that the agenda for the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting of July 7th, 2022, be confirmed.
All in favor? That's carried. Item 5.1, under Presentations. Sorry, I missed item four. Disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Does anyone have anything they wish to declare? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 5.1. Planner James Griffin is here to give us an overview of the changes as being presented tonight. James, go right ahead.
Thank you. Through Counselor St. Jean, I'll just wait for the presentation to load, and then we'll get started. Oh, there we go. Oh. All right, thank you. To counsel, through Counselor St. Jean. So tonight, we're just gonna start with an overview of the changes from the June 15th meeting, and then I will be followed by Emily Cowan, who's going to go over the licensing bylaw, followed by Erin McNichol to go over the legislative and the enforcement aspects of the short-term accommodation licensing bylaw. So to start, at the June 15th meeting, we staff brought forward some changes to the short-term accommodation zoning provisions in the zoning bylaw. The first change proposed to remove the STAs in the R3 zone. We also proposed to remove provisions from the zoning bylaw to the licensing bylaw. Those included density, the number of guest rooms, occupancy, fencing, private, where they're permitted on private roads, servicing, the requirements for an amenity area, as well as provisions regarding waste disposal. If we can go to the next slide, I will go over sort of what we heard in response to those changes. So. Thank you. So, in response, we heard from a number of folks, the number-one concern was the loss of a grandfathering status, being that if we moved items to the licensing bylaw, such as density, that if they were to transfer a license, they would lose their, or sell their property, they would lose their grandfather status, as they would have to be subject to density. That is no longer the case, and that is no longer within the proposed provisions or proposed recommendation. Also, there was the concern regarding, there was a concern regarding STAs taking over neighborhoods. That is still a concern, and we are still requiring density for new STAs. We heard from folks that own Bed &amp; Breakfasts. They were concerned regarding Bed &amp; Breakfasts taking, or being treated the same as short-term accommodations. As I'll go on later in the presentation, Bed &amp; Breakfasts have their own definitions. They are, have their own section in the licensing bylaw, as well as the zoning bylaw, so no changes are being proposed to Bed &amp; Breakfasts. So, in the next slide, I will go over what we are now proposing. So, in our new recommendation to counsel, we are proposing, still proposing, to remove the permission of STAs to be permitted in the urban residential type III zone. We are proposing to keep density, keep the number of guest rooms, and the amenity area provisions within the zoning bylaw, so they will stay. There will be no changes to those provisions, and they will not be moved over. We are proposing to remove the fencing provision, which is a provision regarding if you're located so far from a neighboring residential property, you have to have a privacy fence or landscaping. So that is being proposed to be moved over to the licensing bylaw. Similarly, private road, you have, you would have to comply with the emergency services requirement bylaw, the bylaw for private roads for emergency services. That is just being taken out of the zoning bylaw, because it is actually already in the licensing bylaw, so it would be redundant to have it in both. Servicing, there's a requirement that there is the proper servicing for being, if you're a rural property, septic and well. That is being placed in the licensing bylaw. And lastly, there is a provision regarding waste disposal, that an STA have a single waste disposal. That is also being proposed to be in the licensing bylaw, as it is much more appropriate to be a matter, a requirement of licensing than a zoning requirement. So, as I mentioned before, there are no provisions will be removed from the zoning bylaw and placed within the licensing bylaw that could restrict the issuance of a grandfathered license based on location, or a grandfathered license. So this will not, no changes proposed through the zoning bylaw will impact existing grandfathered licensed STAs. I would also note, there are no proposed changes to commercial STAs. If you're, if you're in the commercial zone now, you're, it's the same provisions as what was introduced in 2018. There's no changes to commercial zone properties. In the next slide, I'll just, I'll finish up with Bed &amp; Breakfasts. So as I mentioned, there are no changes to the proposed Bed &amp; Breakfast provisions in the zoning bylaw. There's already a separately, there's already a separate definition for Bed &amp; Breakfasts in the zoning bylaw. I would like to make one point, a housekeeping, within my report. Unfortunately, I copied and pasted the wrong definition. It states that there, you can serve breakfasts, when it should say you can serve meals. And so that definition's not changing, that definition's staying, there's no changes. So, to finish, the grandfathered status of B&amp;Bs will not be impacted by any of the proposed changes, nor will the grandfathered status of any STA be impacted by the proposed changes. So I'll pass on to Emily.
Thanks, James. Emily, Director of Community Services Programs and Initiatives, unlock what it says up there. So first of all, I will also start with feedback from the public and from stakeholders. After the previous report was seen by the public, we held public consultation. We had lots of feedback in emails, telephone calls, Have Your Say. It's laid out in the report in more detail. As probably isn't very surprising, there was a wide array of different reactions and thoughts and feelings. There were comments that were in support of further restricting STA licensing. There were residents who wanted the opportunity to enter the STA accommodation market. There was a concern at the loss of grandfathering rights when an STA is purchased by a new owner. And Bed &amp; Breakfast owners were concerned that they should not have the same restrictions as other STAs. Next slide, please. So, we, we decided to propose a new structure to the STA licensing program to make things a little clearer to public, to prospective owners, and to municipal staff ourselves, just to make sure everyone's singing from the same hymn sheet, as they say. So, primary residence STA, what we are proposing is that an owner can rent out all or part of their primary residence as an STA. Primary STAs do not have to meet density requirements. When renting an entire primary residence STA, the owner shall do so for no more than 180 days per year. And residents can apply for a partial STA license, or an entire STA rental license. Secondary residence STA, we're proposing that that is a dwelling unit, which is not a primary residence, rented in its entirety to accommodated guests. Secondary resident STAs are restricted to one license only, and secondary resident STAs must comply with density requirements. And while a secondary residence STA is restricted to one STA license only, they could still have a primary residence STA in the home that they live in. License, if they comply. And finally, Bed &amp; Breakfast establishment, this is unchanged from the current STA licensing bylaw. It's located in a single detached dwelling, in which the owner and operator occupies the dwelling, provides no more than four guest rooms, offers daily meals to accommodated guests. Forget the breakfast part, meals is the terminology that we use for that bylaw. Next slide, please. We have proposed to include some information into the STA bylaw to try and make it really clear about legal nonconforming status, or grandfathering. So, within the STA bylaw, we are proposing to include that new owners of properties with legal nonconforming status as an STA may apply for a license to continue that use if they meet all other eligibility provisions contained within the STA bylaw, they meet the requirements related to proof of showing that they are purchasing what was an active STA, and that they continue to establish that they have a legal nonconforming use. So, that means that they haven't rezoned the property, that they're doing something completely different with that property, or that they are adding a bedroom, or changing the building envelope of their property. Next slide, please. Proposed changes to the administrative penalties bylaw, so as you can maybe see from that table, it's also in the report. We're looking at adding fines, fees related to operating an STA without a license. There's a first offense, second offense, and a third offense, $1,000, $2,000, and $4,000. We had proposed a failure to display STA number, license number on an advertisement. And, so, we had said, I can't remember what I said, but I think it was quite high, and feedback was that it seems a bit too high for someone who may have actually just made an administrative error. So, we are proposing $100, $200, or $400 for a third offense, if you advertise an STA without putting your license number on your advertisement. And really, that is to cover the admin time it would take for staff to look for the advertisement, find the file, and find out whether or not the place is actually licensed or not. And then, operating an STA without a license, we have increased that, based on feedback, to $2,000, $4,000, or for a third offense, $8,000. Oh, there it is. So, because the program categories have changed, we need to be clear about what the fees and charges are for getting an STA license under these new streams. So, a primary residence STA for a partial rental, where the owner remains on site, will be the same as what an owner-occupied STA is currently. Secondary residence STA is to be set the same as a whole-home STA was, or is currently. And then, a primary residence STA license for an entire home rental for up to 180 days is right in between the two, a $2.75 per guest room in an inspection year, and $140 per guest room in a renewal year. We also wanted to propose some changes related to accessible STA license provisions. We, it would be great to be able to incentivize more STAs to be fully accessible, so we have provided some guidelines that you can use to create a fully accessible STA. We would encourage people to create a fully accessible STA. They're only guidelines, we can't really tell you how to build your STA, so really, it's a list provided to us by the Accessibility Advisory Committee on what would make a fully accessible STA. And we want to do a bit more work on how we could possibly incentivize a few more of these accommodations happening in Prince Edward County. So, missing from the bylaw amendments is, unfortunately, is Bed &amp; Breakfast establishments. So, because they are their own stream in this new, new way that we're proposing to do it, they require their own fees and charges, and it would be the same as primary residence partial home rental, same as it is now. And also, in the draft bylaw that I have in, in my report, I believe it says in Section 3.1HI, three, but, three or more bedrooms, and then four or more bedrooms, it's actually supposed to be four or more bedrooms, and five or more bedrooms, and that's important. It's an important distinction, because Bed &amp; Breakfasts are allowed to have four guest rooms, and when you increase to five guest rooms, it's a lot more stringent with fire and safety regulations. So I apologize for, for missing those numbers, or transcribing those numbers incorrectly. It is not changing from what was, was previously approved by council. So, these additions here will be included, should committee pass what we're proposing this afternoon, or this evening. We would include those amendments in a final draft bylaw to come to council. Next. And I'm gonna hand it over to Erin.
Thank you, Director Cowan. My name's Erin McNichol, I'm the Director of Corporate Legislative Services here. So I've got a few slides related to short-term accommodation from a bylaw perspective. We've got one on organizational structure, the other on the application process, complaint process, and then the new software that we're going to purchase. So the first slide here is the organizational structure, and how the STA department sort of came about. The bylaw department is made up of STA parking and general bylaw. It was moved from Development Services to Corporate Legislative Services as at January 1st, 2022. So that's relatively new. The STA department is made up of a supervisor of bylaw, who was transferred from the Building Department over to, to the STA group as of January 1st. We have a bylaw coordinator that was hired on in April of 2022, and then three STA officers that were hired in March. So as you can see from an organizational perspective and team development, this is a relatively new team, that's, that's currently developing. And the three ST officers, it's worth to note, also do parking and other bylaw services as well. So they're not specific to only STA. Next slide, please. So this is the application process, and this is actually detailed in the actual bylaw as well, so I won't go through it completely, but a complete application consists of items like proof of ownership, government ID, proof of septic capacity, proof of insurance, site plan, floor plan, photos, and proof of grandfather, grandfathering, if applicable. One thing to note off this slide is that planning, GIS, fire, and building, or other departments are actually involved in the process. So it can take some time, because it comes into, the application comes into STA group, and then it goes out to the different applicable departments. For planning, for example, for zoning. Then we create an invoice and receive payment, schedule inspection, and upon successful completion, we actually issue the license. Okay? So here are some metrics that we just pulled, some numbers for counsel, so that I could end the public as well. So the number of applications in the application process currently are 224, and if you include the eight that are overdue payments, in the collection process, it's 232. So we have 66 applications waiting for more information, five waiting for zoning approval, 12 waiting for building and fire approval, and again, this is where other departments are involved in the process, 36 invoices that have been sent to accounts payable to be created, 18 invoices waiting for payment, 39 inspections, 48 incomplete inspections, and this is where owners are gonna address some of the outstanding issues that the STA group has sent back. Number of inspections conducted over the last 30 days, which I think is quite impressive, is 73. And the number of whole home pending moratorium, these are the applications we received during the moratorium, are 72. And then, number of licenses waiting after complete inspection, and this is certainly a telling number, not zero, so we're moving in the right direction.
I'm sorry, this isn't the time to be asking questions, sir. Continue, Director McNichol.
Thank you. And now on to the next slide regarding the complaint process. So complaints can be received via email, phone, or in person, and a complaint form is to be filled out. And the complaint form needs to include the complainant's name, address, phone number, and email. It also requires a civic address, as well as the STA listing on a rental site, and evidence of, or suspicion of the operation provided. The important portion of this slide is that, in the past, we were reactive. Now we're taking a proactive approach to, to unlicensed STAs, individuals that are advertising while not being licensed, and that ties directly into some of the fines that Director Cowan is recommending to increase in the bylaw. And next slide? Okay, and before I get into this slide, I'll just maybe highlight the fact that there were three unlicensed STAs fined prior to 2022, and so far this year, we've, we're at 14, up to, up to recently. So we've increased the amount dramatically, and we're only halfway through the year. So if we continue on, we'll probably be at about 30 to 35 fines for unlicensed STAs and advertising without a license, so that's a tenfold increase over the previous years. So again, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. Now, the STA, we do have STA compliant software coming online within probably eight to 10 weeks. We've been in communication with, with Hamari already, so we're sort of organizing that. So we procured STA software, it's gonna facilitate the following, it's gonna monitor the local STA markets, report on licensed operators, check validity of STA license numbers, and it's gonna provide a 24/7 complaint hotline, and this is gonna be a little bit easier for staff to handle some of the, some of the information coming through. So that's gonna, we're gonna be able to leverage some, some of that, so we don't have to do as much work and can focus elsewhere. We're also now using, utilizing Air DNA to supplement the proactive approach, and it takes a little bit more time than Hamari system takes, but we've actually been able to find two as a result. So actually, we're moving in the right direction on that front as well. Next slide? That's it, thank you.
Thank you to all three presenters. Members of council? Do you have any questions for any of the staff members and their presentations? Nope, okay, we'll save that for, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Bailey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is specific to 8.2, so if that comes up later at a better time, I'll ask it then.
We'll save the questions for when the motions are actually on the floor.
Thank you.
I was just thinking that counsel might have a question on the top of their minds that needed to be answered right now. Okay. So now, we shall proceed to Agenda Item 6, which is Deputations, and I have one deputation for this evening, Mr. Richard Elliott. You could step up to the microphone, please? And I will remind you, you have 10 minutes, sir. Start whenever you'd like.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. My name's Richard Elliott. I've sent in a brief summary last week of my remarks, prior to seeing the materials. I sent in further information this morning. I was waiting to see if anything else came in in the package, but in any event, I hope you've had a chance to see that, but I'll be going over the essence of, of what's in there. We have two STA properties. One, the main focus of my remarks, is a vacation rental business on a commercial property on Main Street in Wellington. And we also have a second STA on our residential property on Warf Street in Wellington. So regarding the commercial property, when we purchased it in 2014, we were told we could use it for a vacation rental business, and indeed, the county encouraged us to use a commercial property. In 1918, when the STA rules were being implemented, I spoke with Paul Walsh at the county, and he confirmed that an STA was a permitted use on our commercial property. I've sent you an email exchange where we went through the progression of what do we do with commercial properties, that weren't even initially contemplated in the, in the rules. And I understand that many of the considerations around STAs relate to residential properties, and as I say, we have a residential STA, and I understand a lot of the, the different issues, so I don't wanna speak to or detract, or really comment on that, I know a lot of other people want to, so I'll, I'll narrow my comments here on, in relation to our commercial property. And, and to be clear, commercial properties have always been, I think it's fair to say, an afterthought with respect to STAs. The initial STA rules were promulgated, and they came out, and there were meetings and everything, and I had to point out to them that there wasn't a single reference to commercial properties, so it wasn't clear whether you could do them, and everything was fine, or you couldn't do them at all, so they went back. They looked at it, and they said, "Of course you can do it, we want them on commercial properties." And I said, "Okay, well, can you just make that clear, or say this doesn't apply to?" So they said, "Well, how about this? We'll make them apply, but just to make sure you have insurance and smoke alarms and that stuff, but other than that, there's no restriction." I said, "Fine." The position has consistently been that throughout, even up to the meeting that was here a month ago. The core position with respect to a commercial property has been pretty simple. It is, as Paul says in his email, a permitted use, an STA is a permitted use, I'm not getting into legal nonconforming, it is a permitted use on a commercial zone, and if you sell it to a new purchaser, as long as they have insurance and all those things, there's no density limit, it can be sold. And as recently as last month, when I spoke with Michael Michaud offline around the, the meeting here, he said the same thing, of course, yes, you can sell it to whoever you want, it's a commercial property. So, that brings me to the materials now, which for the first time in this entire world since we've had this commercial vacation rental business, we now have brand-new restrictions on it that we never had before. So we're actually in a worse spot than we were even a month ago. And there's two provisions, and I'll, I'll reference the numbering in the, one of the documents, and I appreciate there's separate numbering in, in the STA licensing bylaw itself, but you'll get the gist of it. One of the provisions defines a secondary residence STA to mean an STA in which one or two dwellings, in any event, you can read it, but the upshot is that our vacation rental business on a commercial property is now defined as a secondary residence STA, which I, I find an odd name. It's not a residence at all, it can't legally be a residence, it's not permitted to be used as a residence. But once again, the notion of what to do with commercial properties is a complete afterthought in this whole regime. in this whole regime, but the distinction is important. It goes on in Section 3D, which is now Paragraph 27 in the bylaw itself, to basically say that there's a limit of one secondary residence SDA license that can be issued per natural person. And by the way, I'm not sure, the whole natural person discussion, why that makes sense in the commercial context in relation to a business, but in any event. So now we find ourselves in the peculiar situation where all this time, up until this past week, we've been able to sell it to anyone, or transfer it to my daughter, or whoever it is, and they could carry it on as an SDA business. The need to potentially carry it on as an SDA business has become more pressing. If the heritage plan goes through as contemplated, we will have restrictions and limits on our ability to alter or repurpose that building. So that may be its highest and best use, is to be an SDA, and I need assurances that, you know, it can at least be used as an SDA. Now, I don't know if this is just, again, an afterthought or inadvertent admission, that's what Paul Walsh said it was back in 2018, so it may be that there's just a simple fix here, which is to say that when you're counting, you're not counting STAs on commercial properties, you're counting STAs on residential properties. But I don't know for sure. There's nothing in the report that explains any rationale why you would limit who the purchaser of a business on a commercial property is. And if we are selling a business on a commercial property as a going concern, logical purchasers include people who are good at running that kind of business, and who are experienced in that kind of business, which may be someone who already has an SDA. I fail to see entirely why, when we're encouraged to have a business and to have this as a commercial operation, we would in any way be restricted. So as I say, there is a simple fix, I can offer it up after, but I indicated in the email I sent through this morning, you can just make clear that the, when you're counting, if this is the way this ends up, that you don't count STAs on commercial properties, that what you're focused on is residential. Otherwise, we find ourselves in bizarre situations, like if I die and it goes to my daughters, she won't even be able to run it as an SDA, because we'll count the two we have, and we're out of luck. I don't think any of that was intended, that's not what I'm suggesting, but I find myself in a similar position I found myself back in 2018, where for understandable reasons, the overwhelming focus was on residential properties. But I just want to point out, there's some inadvertent collateral impact here, and this is the first time in this whole process. Up until now, it's just been, at worst, some confusing language, but the core story's been intact. We can do it on a commercial property, you can sell it to anyone on a commercial property. Right now, over these past few days with this new wording, this is the first time that it's actually eroded our rights to use the commercial property as it is. And lastly, as I say, in conjunction with the heritage plan, if that goes through and limits our ability to repurpose it, it's all the more important that we can, at a minimum, us, my daughter, subsequent owner, can at least use that property the way it's used today. So again, I don't want to detract from anyone else's legitimate concerns and interests on residential STAs, we have one as well, but I did want to focus on that, on that narrow issue, because I think it's an unintended consequence, but I don't know for sure. So those are my remarks.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Elliott, don't go anywhere. Questions for the deputant from members of council? Okay, you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as, that's it for deputations, and now we are at comments from the audience.
Can we receive the deputation from?
Trying to jump through a few things too quickly, my apologies. Yes, a motion to receive the deputation, please. Mayor Ferguson, Counselor Prinzen.
Ferguson, Prinzen, motion that the deputation by Richard Elliott, resident, to address the committee regarding SDA license be received.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, comments from the audience. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, there will be, on my list, I have eight members of the public who are attending and wishing to speak virtually or in person, and I suspect there may be a few more in the audience, so could I request a motion of counsel? Mayor Ferguson and Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a motion to waive the procedural bylaw to allow comments from the audience to extend beyond 30 minutes if necessary.
Yes, Counselor Maynard.
Just for clarification, but each comment will still be limited to the three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? That carries. Okay, so let's, the first person on my list is Anthony Lemke, and is Anthony with us on the screen? Yes, he is. Can you hear me, Anthony? No, not yet.
I think he's connected now.
Can you hear us, Anthony?
Oh, I can hear you. Hello, am I on, am I speaking now?
Yes, you're first up, and we can hear you clearly, so you have three minutes as a comment from the audience, and you can start anytime.
Thanks a lot, and my comment goes in the same vein as Richard's, in terms of the notion of an SDA as a business in a commercial zone versus an SDA in a residential, so I don't intend to comment on that. I think, you know, I happen to, I happen to agree with restricting, or trying to migrate anyway, the STAs towards the commercial zone, and I think that that's my understanding of the intention of previous regulations, and I think also the intention of this iteration of the regulations. So I just have a few questions. I wholeheartedly support what Richard said, but I literally just have a question, which is, if we're, if a corporation owns a property on Main Street, how can it take an otherwise conforming residence and turn it into an SDA? For example, if you take something like where Enid Grace's building is in Wellington, above that is an SDA, and it seems like that's a pretty logical place to put one, but if you happen to own the building as a corporation, who applies for that permit? Because currently, the corporation can't, and it's pretty darn common for commercially-zoned properties to be owned by corporations. So that's a question that I have, it's also a concern about the natural persons requirement as it applies to commercially-zoned properties, and I have sent those questions into staff, and I'm awaiting response on those, so I just wanted to flag that in person at this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, that's the extent of your comments, Anthony?
That is the extent of my comment. Thank you very much, I keep it short this week.
Okay, thank you. And so the UNO staff, both planning staff and all of our staff are here paying attention, and I see James Madley writing your question down, so I expect he will have a response for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay. Members of council, are there any questions for the, for Mr. Lemke? Nope, okay, thank you very much, Anthony.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Okay, second on my list is Debbie Marshall, and I have you down, Debbie, down as an in-person. Is Debbie here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight, Debbie, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council, and members of the audience. My name is Debbie Marshall, and I wish to address my current concerns regarding Section 3E of the draft proposal for the SDA bylaws. It states clarifying language to confirm that according to Planning Act, legal nonconforming use provisions, properties that have a secondary residence SDA license to these, sorry, to these bylaw amendments coming into effect may, when sold to subsequent owners, be eligible for a secondary residence SDA license, providing that all other criteria of the licensing program are met. I wish to know if all the other criteria of the licensing program that is to be met is based on the date the SDA was grandfathered, or as of the date it gets passed this year, as these licensing requirements are continuously evolving. I take great offense to the imbalances of the fees for the inspections of our short-term accommodations in comparison to the fines for unlicensed offenders. I pay $325 per bedroom for my cottage at my first cottage, and, as well as $325 at my second cottage, totaling $1,300 on the year of inspection. By the time I add in fire inspection for my fire extinguisher, which is absolutely ludicrous, since I can read a gauge, as well as the certified person can, I find that this is not nearly steep enough fines to make the unlicensed unpalatable to the offenders. If I'm paying out of pocket, say $1,500 a year for my license, and someone gets a first-time offense of $2,000 for a property which they're probably earning at, on average, $3,000 a week, if not more, and you think that $2,000 is enough for a first-time offense, so in effect, they actually are benefiting from not being licensed, and we're being penalized once again. Your fines are not common sense. Common sense is that you would at least make it hurt that offender, not reward them. And I really find it offensive that you're congratulating yourselves on 14, 14 offenders in two and a half years. I myself have found two, and I haven't even looked. They just landed in my lap, and you're congratulating yourselves on this. I'm paying $1,300 on inspection year for someone to come to my home.
Debbie, your time is up. You've actually gone over three minutes.
All right.
Don't go anywhere, please. Members of council, any questions for Ms. Marshall? Nope, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just throw it on the floor. Okay, sorry about that, folks. Technology failure over here to my right. Okay, next on my list is Devel Morrison, and I have Devel listed as an in-person. There you are. I think you know the drill, Devel, you've been here a few times. And you have three minutes, whenever you want to get started.
Got my own timer going here. Hi, everyone. My name is Devel Morrison, I'm the president of short-term, Licensed Short-Term Accommodators of Prince Edward County. I'm going to be reading into the record a letter from our lawyer, Krista Lidman, from Soloway Wright, and it's a letter that has been emailed to all of the councilors, mayor, and staff. As noted in her letter of June 15th, they are the lawyers for the organization known as the short-term, Licensed Short-Term Accommodators of PEC, and this is with respect to the county's review of the zoning and licensing bylaws regulating STAs. We have reviewed the amended staff recommendation regarding amendments to the zoning bylaw and the SDA licensing bylaw, and are very pleased with the changes. We understand staff's intention to be that the recommended amendments to the zoning bylaw will not result in the removal of legal nonconforming rights under the zoning bylaw in accordance with the Planning Act, and that no provision from the zoning bylaw will be moved to the licensing bylaw that could restrict a grandfathered SDA from getting a license upon sale. This intention is clearly stated in the conclusion section of the staff report at page 11. We support staff's recommendation that grandfathered STAs will be allowed to transfer their SDA license to a new owner upon purchase. We understand that the new owners, as with all SDA owners, grandfathered or not, may be required to comply with changes in the zoning and licensing bylaws, as well as the Ontario Building Code, that are deemed to be critical to occupant life safety, fire protection, and administrative in nature, license payments, MAT, et cetera. We seek explicit confirmation that grandfathered STAs will not be subject to changes in density calculation, number of bedrooms permitted, or other aesthetic requirements, setbacks, landscaping, parking, et cetera, that do not directly impact the safety of occupants or the administration of the program. We would also like to submit comments regarding the proposed changes to the licensing bylaw. When an entire home, actually, we would like to confirm that the intent is to restrict the rental of the unit that is designated as a principal residence from being rented out more than 180 nights per calendar year, but that is not, this is not a restriction, is not intended to apply to a secondary unit within the building, which could be rented out as an SDA for the entire year. When an entire home or unit within a home is occupied as, to a long-term tenant under a lease, this property has been considered owner-occupied SDA. This situation requires additional regulation, given it's obviously in the county's best interest to support long-term rentals. That can provide affordable housing. We recommend an additional category of STAs, being the partial primary SDA residence. The addition of this category would mean that primary residence SDA is one unit only, either entirely occupied by the owner or the long-term tenant. And there's more in the letter that you've all received, but obviously, I'm out of time.
Thank you for monitoring yourself there. Members of council, questions for Devel? I'm not seeing any hands. Oh, sorry, Counselor Maynard.
Thank you, thank you, Devel, for your presentation. So you've made a couple requests for some recommendations that you would like to, that you would like to have inserted in this. We find it not best practice to do those on the fly, so if it was to take another week or so to accomplish that and do it with, with proper, you know, to get it right, you and your, and the group that you represent would be, would be fine with that?
Absolutely, and I do think it's important to look at the long-term rental implications as well, too, because that is, that's something that seemed to have also sort of fallen off the list. When SDA licensing first happened, there was mention that if there was a long-term tenant, it was going to be okay to rent out the other two or three units as STAs. And I'm assuming you want more long-term rentals, so I feel like it's not in the county's best interest to basically have somebody turn a building into entirely STAs, only because the rules are now harder, tougher on them, simply because they've got a long-term tenant. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions for Ms. Morrison? Nope, not seeing any hands, thank you, Devel. I should remind everyone that a decision, any decisions made tonight aren't final until they come before council at the next available council meeting, just as a reminder to everybody. Next on my list is Mike Amis, and I know Mike's here, I saw him come in the door. Okay, welcome, Mike, you have three minutes.
Here we go again. Yes, thanks, folks, I appreciate your time. So lucky for you, I'm not using my own words tonight, I'm going to read you a letter from Airbnb's legal team that's been sent to staff and council, or at least excerpts from it, because there's not enough time to read you the whole thing. You do have copies, so I would encourage you to read it as well. They're referring to the grandfathering issue, when the last changes we discussed would essentially make grandfathered owners, upon transition of the property, reapply for a license. And they say, and I quote, "This position strips owners of the protections offered under Section 349 of the Ontario Planning Act, which provides that when zoning bylaw is amended, the use of any land, building, or structures that was lawfully established under the prior zoning bylaw and as a continued..." under the prior zoning bylaw, and is a continuation of that lawful pre-existing use, can continue even when such use does not comply with amended standards." They then go on to cite case law and tribunal evidence, in particular, the Supreme Court case 898, that said if there was an existing legal use that operated prior to an enactment of a proposed bylaw amendment, the proposed bylaw amendment does not render them illegal. They summarize their legal argument by saying, "Given that a legal non-conforming use runs with the land and not with the owner, and thus a legal non-conforming use may be continued from owner to successors. Any established legal non-conforming use of an STA would pass to the purchaser upon sale of the STA. This principle must, in Prince Edward County, remain in effect." As we have done in our association many times in the past, they then practically argue the matter by saying, "The STA owners and the tourism that they support here in the county is a major economic driver." They unfortunately have got the number a bit lower, as far as the economic impact is, but I base my estimates on your own report that Todd Davis made to this council and staff in 2021. The report was called "Making a Case for Tourism." He estimated in 2017, tourism contributed almost $200 million to the Prince Edward County economy, that it was 35% to 40% of all employment, that people who stay here in roofed accommodations, as I've said so many times before, spend five times more than people who are day-trippers, and then, of course, we all know that STAs provide about 75% of those roofed accommodations. Lord have mercy, we don't need to do, you don't need to be a rocket scientist to do the actual cause and effect here of dismantling STAs and understanding what would happen to our friends and neighbours who own businesses here and have got jobs here. But I'll leave that for you to figure out. So they finish by saying, "However, actions that would strip residents and property owners of protections afforded by section 34.9 of the Ontario Planning Act will ultimately harm small businesses that rely on tourism to thrive and survive. They ask you that you consider making a fair and reasonable decision that will continue to support the economic health and vitality of the county for many years to come."
That's it, my time's up. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Any questions from members of council, from Mr. Amos? Not seeing any hands, thank you, Mike. Next on my list is Brian Dandrad, I believe is the way it's pronounced, did I get it right?
Dandretti.
Okay.
Thank you.
As you've heard, you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Start anytime.
I'll be less than three minutes, thank you, council, and STA overview team, and members of the audience. My name is Brian Dandretti, and I'm the owner of 600 Fish Lake Road, and it's a mini cottage, it's otherwise known as a micro cabin, on 600 Fish Lake Road. It's my understanding that my 2020 STA application is still in moratorium status, which is probably one of the 72 that I noticed was on the screen earlier, and I sincerely hope that this three-season property can still qualify as an STA. The micro cabin can only occupy one or two residents or tenants, and I'm hoping that it doesn't interfere with any neighbouring properties, as it is in isolation, there's many metres away, or even kilometres, to the next residents. So I'm just wondering if I fall in one of the clauses that would allow this to be an STA? That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, and as I mentioned earlier, to Mr. Lampke, staff are taking notes, and hopefully we can get an answer for you. Any questions from members of council? Councillor McNuton?
Thank you, and to the commenter, thank you. I just wanted to understand, when you say three-season cottage, can you, or micro cabin, love that, can you describe sort of its suitability for only three seasons as opposed to four?
Yes, well, it certainly doesn't have the luxuries of a, you know, a four-season home. It has a little fireplace, no real furnace or anything like that, it's, it's really just, if you can envision a 400-square-foot little structure made of wood, with a loft, and essentially, that's it.
Is it insulated?
It is.
It is?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks for the information. Cottage, three-season buildings have come up, and I, you know, there's, they're currently not exempted in any way, but it certainly is interesting to hear about yours. Thank you very much for the information.
Okay, thank you. Just, Brian, with regards to this three-season nature of it, that means you shut the water off in the winter, because you can't be sure that it's actually going to not freeze on you, right?
Exactly.
It's meant for three seasons.
Exactly.
Okay. Councillor Margerson?
Thank you. Just a quick question, is this the only dwelling unit on that parcel?
So, right now it is, and there's a potential for a second cabin, so that could be, and hopefully will be, the primary residence, so I could live there. But as it stands now, I cannot live there year-round, so I guess it would fall under the secondary status, right? It certainly wouldn't take away, you know, from a couple or a small family with one child, you know, you know, potential income for another residence to have them renting.
Thank you. Councillor Forrester?
Thank you, just a quick question, is this cabin over 100 square feet?
It is.
It is.
It's close to 400.
And was that permanent to build?
Yes.
It was, thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions from members of council? Seeing none, okay, thank you very much. Next on the list is Nancy Pavin, I believe. Okay, welcome, Nancy.
Hi.
As you heard, you have three minutes for your comments.
I was just wondering if it's okay if I let Karen Orm speak at my, on my place? Because we made notes together, and I think she feels more comfortable reading them out, if you're okay with that.
Sure, I'll allow that.
Good.
My name is Karen Orm, and my husband and I run a bed and breakfast, Runaway Rooster, in Bloomfield. I am here today as a spokesperson on behalf of bed and breakfast owners. We presented a letter at the June 15th meeting, signed by 24 B&amp;B owners, outlining our concerns about the impact that these ever-changing STA bylaws and restrictions continue to pose on our businesses. In reviewing the proposed amendments being discussed here tonight, we appreciate and endorse staff's recommendation to create a separate licensing stream for bed and breakfast establishments, rather than categorize them within the primary residence STAs. It has been our recommendation, since licensing was implemented in 2018, that B&amp;Bs be recognized as distinct and in a category of its own, not lumped in with what was defined as owner-occupied STAs. However, we ask that the three recommended streams, primary residence, secondary residence, and bed and breakfast establishment, go beyond just the proposed definition changes. For clarity's sake, they need to be unmistakably displayed in the licensing bylaw as three separate streams, with the legislative language, requirements, restrictions, exclusions, etc., pertaining to each stream clearly and fully communicated under each one. Doing so would enable council to better communicate licensing changes in the future, as it pertains to each stream, which would help eliminate this time and effort that bed and breakfast owners must invest to ensure that the proposed changes aimed at restricting vacation rental properties do not impact their livelihood and business viability. We'd also like to note that while the 180-day rental proposal does not appear to affect us, we hope not, the restriction actually makes no sense at all for any STA accommodator or our tourism industry. Why does council want to put restrictions in place, for what benefit? Would that, would you put the restriction in place for a retailer, restaurateur, an art gallery? No. So why then a specific sector of accommodators? How does putting a cap on the number of days a property can rent out help the dark streets in winter? It doesn't. How does change in property owner's decision to rent for half the year, which would be the peak season, long-term rent for the other half of the year, with tenants having to search for new lodging come spring? It doesn't. How does it help the residents' efforts and vision, or the new DMO, to extend tourism into the off-shoulder season and the winter seasons, if there is reduced lodging because properties have reached their 180-day rental limit? It doesn't. Council appears to have lost focus of key elements in its tourism management plan and destination development master plan, including implementing strategies to grow off-season travel, and developing assets and experiences to entice increased visitation from November to May. A 180-day restriction is counterintuitive to all of that, and we ask that it be dropped from the proposed bylaw amendments.
Could I ask you to wrap up, please? Your time is up.
I'm just doing that, thank you again.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you again to staff for revising the proposed licensing to recognize that it's distinction between B&amp;Bs and vacation rental properties. We ask that it be taken even further with clearer definition and language to spell out each stream's requirements, exclusions, and more under each category. Thank you.
You did a great job, Karen. Don't go anywhere. Members of council, any questions for Karen? I'm not seeing any up there, okay? No questions, thank you very much. Okay, next on my list is Clayton Miller. Is Clayton here? There he is. Okay, welcome, Clayton, and you have three minutes. Start whenever you'd like.
Thanks for hearing me today. My wife and I own a licensed STA on Glosson Road. It's a 65-acre farm there that we purchased in 2013. I do support the changes that have been discussed tonight, I appreciate them, we were very not in favour of what had previously been tabled, so thank you, I think you've hit the mark there well. I do support the comments made earlier on commercial properties and how they should be exempt from these restrictions, I think it's, I think it makes a lot of sense, what Richard in particular was saying. And since I don't really have anything to complain about as it relates to the STA, I did want to mention, though, the, well, I am also appreciative that in the rhetoric, the whole concept of STAs as somehow connected to the lack of affordable housing has been kind of decoupled. I believe that lack of affordable housing has to do with all kinds of things at the federal, provincial, and local level, macro and micro issues, and relates to missing middle housing and all kinds of things. And to that end, our property is 65 acres, the back 40 is what is farmed, the middle 10 is what is just protected wetland, and the front 10 is what we live on, basically. But we can't do anything with it, except look at this beautiful 10 acres that we can't do anything on, because it's prime agriculture. And when I raise the potential of adding housing to that property for rental basis, and I'd even be willing to go as far as to make it restricted to low-income housing, or to seasonal workers, that is just a no-go. And, you know, we'd be willing to put up a three-story mid-apartment building on our property to accommodate, like I said, seasonal and low-income housing, but that's how you solve the housing affordability crisis, and I encourage council to think about that kind of thing, because when you talk to the planning department, it's just a no-go. They won't even, they won't even hear what you have to say, and they won't explore a concept with you, and they won't give you any direction on how you might make something happen. Now, I know it's not their job to help me with my development plans, but they could be more welcoming to concepts that are in favour of the very things that council is discussing. And those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Don't go anywhere, Clayton, any questions from any members of council? Nope, okay. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
And eighth on my list is, joining us, Wellwin Wong is joining us virtually. Are you there, Wellwin?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Oh, sorry.
You, you will, you have 30, 30 minutes, no, you have three minutes for your comments from the audience, and you can start anytime.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much for, just all of the people that have certainly taken lots of time to think about STAs and the impact that they have in the communities, and certainly I do appreciate what you're trying to do. I just have a few things, I mean, there's lots that were discussed, and I think the previous people that discussed before me, I loved the comments made by Ms. Morrison, and also just a few things about the Ontario bylaw, so, but I just was wondering, who qualifies as grandfathered, specifically for the STAs of residential, and if, if it's in licensing process, which seems to be backlog right now, can a grandfathered STA, or anyone in that matter, who's continued to run their operation?
Yeah, we're still here.
Okay.
I'm not sure what to answer, staff are taking all of these questions down from each of the commenters, and I expect they will be responding to them. That's the, do you have any other further questions, Wellwin?
No, I just appreciate all the efforts that everyone's putting forth, on both sides.
Okay, thank you, hang on now, members of council, questions, councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Wellwin. Are you in fact running an STA now and awaiting a licence?
I am.
So you're an unlicensed STA?
Correct.
Thank you.
I've been running it since 2017.
That's slightly astonishing, but thank you.
Okay, pardon me?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to know why you thought that was astonishing.
Councillor Roberts, did you wish to address that?
The reason we have a licensing process is to avoid STAs operating outside of our criteria, and I'm just amazed that you would not have applied for an STA licence in 2017, or 2018, I should say.
My partner had passed that year, and so I had to take some time to recover.
And, Wellwin, where is your STA?
It's in Wellington.
Questions from members of council, I thought I saw a hand up on the screen? No? Changed your mind? Okay. Anyone else in the room? Not seeing any hands? Okay, thank you very much, Wellwin. Okay, given that there are a number of people in the audience that I know haven't spoken, these are, we are at comments from the audience, so if there is anyone else that wishes to speak, I would ask if you please raise your hand, or come straight up to the mic? No? Okay.
Yes, one back there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you past the, our technician's head. Please, please state your name for the record.
Great, hi, everyone, Jeff Gallid. We have an STA here, we split our time between here and Toronto. First-time caller, long-time listener to these meetings. I just want to, for those of you, I know people, I know the wonderful people of Prince Edward County always hate hearing anything about Toronto, but I want to tell you about a department at the city of Toronto that issues- a department at the city of Toronto that issues the city street parking permits. They win awards. They give the absolute best customer experience for parking. And I think it's really interesting, as STA owners frustrations are high, we've, you know, been through a lot together, I want to come back to the basics that it's really important we focus on the taxpayer experience. And I want to give you a prime example. We don't even get our licenses mailed or emailed to us. We have to go to City Hall and pick them up. And so, all I would encourage staff to think about is come back to the basics of the taxpayer experience while we go through this. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from members of council?
Yes.
Counselor Maynard?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for your comments. When you talk about the taxpayer experience, you're talking about the experience of the STA owners or of all taxpayers as a, as a whole?
I think, I think, Counselor, anybody who is making any kind of contribution to the tax system. So if it's a, a full-time resident, an STA owner, you know, if our emails are good enough to pay our MAT tax, we should be able to get our license over email. We should be able to have regular communication with the STA bylaw officers. I think staff, and it's been proven by these metrics, and metrics matter, have been completely overwhelmed by the STA program at, 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 at Shire Hall. We get that. But every decision that's made in planning, in putting together new rules, the forms you make, the, the rules you create, bring it back to the taxpayer experience. Everybody here has money invested in whatever bylaw, any project you put together. And so just to bring it as simply as I said, we can't even get our licenses and the numbers emailed to us. I would love to show my, I'm proud that I have a license. I'd love to show it on my Airbnb listing. That requires me to not work between 8:30 and 4:30 and get to Shire Hall and pick it up. So I'm just, again, customer service. I know tensions were high at the last meeting. We're all in this together, but taxpayer experience matters, and we have to get back to that level of customer service I think everybody deserves.
All right.
Sorry, and I, I'm, I'm not going to debate, but it's just that when you're, when you're speaking to council, we have to take into consideration the, the concerns and the, the rights of, of all of our residents, regardless of whether they're taxpayers or whether they are in business. So that's, that's the, that's a conundrum that, that we have.
Order, please. Any further questions from members of council? Seeing none? Thank you very much, sir. I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else that wishes to join us in comments from the audience?
Good evening, councilors. My name is Scott Raridan. I think I spoke at the last meeting specifically about affordable housing and how I am usually blown away about how much time we're spending furthering this licensing program and not spending enough time talking about affordable housing. What I want to talk about today is specifically how few tickets have been issued and how few complaints have actually been made against STA owners for operating against, without a license. In 2020, there were five complaints for operating without a license given to the STA bylaw department. No tickets were issued. 2021, 13 complaints were made in 2021, and three tickets were issued. None of those have been paid. In 2022, 14 complaints have been made to date this year, probably by a few folks in this audience. 14 tickets were issued, only two have been issued, have been paid. My question is to the councilors, with so few complaints actually having made, why are we spending time furthering this, the licensing, this bylaw, when there actually aren't complaints being made, there's no actual tickets being issued on a regular basis to the 200 to 500 STAs that are operating without a license? I implore council to focus more on the unlicensed operators, focus less on those in the audience who are operating with a license legally, following the rules, and also hopefully focus on building more affordable housing, when none of the, almost a majority of these properties that are licensed would never be sold on the market at a rate that is considered affordable or even marginally affordable. So thanks for your time. Once again, all that information was through a Freedom of Information request directly from the clerk's office, and I'm happy to share it with any councilors if they don't have access to that information as well. Thank you.
Any questions from members of council? Nope? Okay. Unless anybody else wishes to stand up and speak that hasn't already spoken, not seeing any more hands, then I need to ask council for a motion to receive comments from the audience. Counselor Prinsen and Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a Prinsen-Roberts motion that we now receive all the comments made from the audience tonight.
Thank you. All in favor? That is carried. So we are now at agenda item 8.1. There is a motion on the agenda. If I could, James is making his way to the podium. So I need a mover and a seconder for the motion as printed on the agenda. Who would like to do that? Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor McMahon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a Roberts-McMahon motion that report DS 121-2022 be received, and to that council directs staff to bring the draft bylaw attachment two to the July 12, 2022 council meeting for approval.
Okay. Questions, comments from council with regards to that motion? Members of council? Going once? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions for you, James, from members of council?
Through, through Counselors St. Jean, what I might quickly do, there were a few comments from the audience with questions regarding the Planning Act, Section 34, and the zoning bylaw, so I think I'd just take that opportunity to go through those.
Absolutely. I saw you taking your notes over there, so this is your opportunity. Please go ahead.
So, just to start, the, the first couple were concerning legal nonconforming, and specifically Section 34.9 of the Planning Act. So the zoning bylaw, nothing within the zoning bylaw, or my report, or my recommendation, is taking away anyone's legal nonconforming status as a grandfathered, or, so if you're legal nonconforming, you're grandfathered, status as an STA. There are no recommendations that would restrict the transfer of a license based on the location or based on the grandfathered status for the report. So then, moving on to Brian Dendretti, 600 Fish Lake Road. I would note, I believe he is in the pause, there are items that we'd have to review his STA, being, I believe it is a rural residential property, so there would be a zoning review that would need to be, take place there. Who qualified? Then the next one was who qualifies as a grandfathered short-term accommodation? It would be if you were operating legally prior to October 9, 2018. So legally would be that you were renting as per a short-term accommodation, so renting your dwelling prior to October 9, 2018, and you've continued that use since, or haven't paused that use for at least two years. And then, I think that's the most of it for zoning, and the rest were licensing comments, and so I'll allow my colleagues to answer those.
Don't go anywhere. I see Counselor Margerson's hand in, in the air, followed by Counselor Forrester.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I realize that this is a question related to the licensing bylaw, but it might affect a planning opinion, and that was regarding the secondary resident STA as it affects commercial properties. Can you comment on that, or should that be deferred into?
I might defer, I might, in regards to licensing, I might defer it, but I will take a stab in regards to the commercial. A commercial within the zoning is permitted. I would note, if you're a dwelling unit, so if you're in a commercial zone and it's a dwelling unit, you're a short-term accommodation, because a short-term accommodation as defined is a dwelling unit. If you're not a dwelling unit, if you're a commercial building and not a dwelling unit, so if you, like you, a traditional commercial building, you wouldn't qualify as a short-term accommodation under the zoning, so you don't have to worry about the short-term accommodation. The only reason someone would be under a short-term accommodation licensing is because they are within a dwelling unit. So for the most part, they are a portion of a residential building, or they are a residential dwelling.
So the secondary residence would not apply, then? Is that, could I summarize it by saying?
Well, it, it, you would be a secondary residence under the licensing bylaw, I believe, if here it's not your principal residence. If it's not your primary residence under the licensing bylaw.
Hmm. Can you, can, can you help?
I, oh, it's a dwelling unit, right. So if you're a short-term accommodation, the definition of a short-term accommodation is a dwelling unit or a portion of a dwelling unit. So if you're, the only reason a commercial zone would need a short-term accommodation license is if it is in a dwelling unit.
Right.
The question was the residence. There was a statement that, well, I'm not a, I'm not a dwelling, I'm not a residence, I'm, I'm a commercial business. Well, the only reason that you'd be a commercial business would be, or an STA, would be if you're in a dwelling unit as defined. So that's sort of where I was going with that. In regards to the primary, the primary and secondary residence, I might leave that for Emily in regards to the licensing, but maybe we can touch on that. Emily can touch on that, sorry.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Margerson?
I, I just want to make sure that I understand, a commer, if, if you have a primary residence, STA in a commercial wouldn't be a secondary residence, even though it's a dwelling unit under, as defined in the building code?
From my understanding, in regards to the, the zoning bylaw, it wouldn't be impacted. Like I said, I'd pass, in regards to primary, secondary, I'd pass that question on to Emily.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Don't go anywhere. Counselor Forrester, followed by Counselor McNaughton.
James, I'm not sure if you can answer this, but this was a question, it was brought up by one of the deputants that, on the fines, that we were actually helping them, but if I looked at, it started out as $1,000, $2,000, and $8,000. Once they hit that number three, every offense they have, is it $8,000 every time?
In regards to, that's into regards to the licensing bylaw, so that'll be at Section eight, that'll be agenda item 8.2, so.
I, I know it is, but I, I was just, I wasn't sure to ask it now, because what the deputy has, can I ask that later? Okay, I'll wait till later.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back to you on that one, Counselor Forrester. Is that, is that it for now? Anything to do with the zoning bylaw? Okay. Counselor McNaughton, and then Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, I'm clear now. I heard what I was looking for in James's explanation.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. James, I'm just, I want to make sure I heard, what I heard, I heard. So, to be grandfathered, what's the criteria to be grandfathered?
To have been an existing short-term accommodation prior to October 9, 2018, when the short-term accommodation definition and the short-term accommodation provisions were introduced into the zoning bylaw. So the date of that was October 19, 2018, so you would have had to exist and operate as a short-term accommodation prior to that date.
And you had to have your application in, in the last four years?
Again, that's a licensing, and in terms of zoning, to be legal nonconforming under Section 34.9 of the Planning Act, it doesn't speak to licensing, it just speaks to the use.
Okay, thanks. I'll wait and ask that at the next one. Thanks.
I think Emily knows she has a few questions coming her way. Any, anything further? Any questions? More questions for James with regards to this motion, which has, directly involves the zoning bylaw? Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands, so Emily.
Mr. Chair, you can call the vote.
Yeah, okay. I, I know Emily's going to come up next under 8.2. Just, Madam CAO, do you?
I'm just, can we maybe get Emily to come up and talk about the grandfathering, because that's a very important point related to this bylaw? So we need that point clear before you accept this bylaw as drafted.
Yes, and I think that's where I was going when I was looking at Emily, that there were questions specific to grandfathering, but they also have an impact on the zoning bylaw, so. Emily?
So with grandfathering, James is obviously a planner and absolutely correct that the, the STA licensing bylaw came into effect, in the STA bylaw and the zoning bylaw, in 2018. And so anyone who operated an STA before that time were automatically grandfathered as a legal nonconforming use. But the other thing to add is, every time you change a bylaw, if you were legal nonconforming at one time, and then you change that bylaw and give it new rules, everyone who is legal nonconforming up to that point continued to be legal nonconforming or grandfathered. So if, if changes were made to this bylaw and it was approved on July 12, everyone who was legal nonconforming today have their license or active, everything's on the up and up, they carry on the way they were. They can renew, as long as they have their insurance, as long as the life safety features are, are there. Also, when they sell their property to a new owner, that new owner has a right to use that as a legal nonconforming short-term accommodation. They do have to apply for a new license. They will not have to abide by the density restrictions. So as long as they don't change the, the STA in terms of maybe adding a bedroom, or if they don't rezone it, which they wouldn't if they want to run it as an STA, they should be able to get a license.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Forrester?
That's not the question I had asked.
Okay, that was Brad's, Counselor Nyman's question. Does that answer your question, Counselor Nyman?
Yes, I'm good with that, so I'll, I'll, yeah, I'm good until the next one. Yep.
Okay. Counselor Forrester, you had a licensing question?
Well, mine, Emily, was just about the fines, because somebody mentioned that we're actually helping out people by, just with a small amount of fines, but I'm assuming once we get to level three, then they're now on our radar that we will be checking on them weekly, and that $8,000 would be repeated time and again every time they made an offense.
But you, you should cease operating and pay your fine when you are, I'm looking at you, Erin, because this is really your story, and I'm just hoping that I'm saying the right thing here.
I, we would definitely take it more active through the chair to Counselor Forrester. We definitely would take a more proactive approach to that. So if we got up to $8,000 under the new fines, we would just keep levying fines, and we would have a staff member out there on numerous occasions. And there are tax-reuling provisions which would allow us, if the individual did not want to pay, their tax-reuling provisions that would allow us to put this on a property tax. So you really couldn't avoid it, and certainly an individual could only handle so many $8,000 fines before they would cease and desist, so.
Thank you. That was my next question. So we will be putting them under tax bill if they refuse to pay it?
Absolutely. And with regards to the one question about the 14, and how many have actually paid, we'll keep track of that, and then we'll go through finance to actually levy that onto their actual tax bill. So, yes.
And just to follow, so on the sale of that home, that would be made payable regardless?
On statement of adjustment, absolutely, yeah. It would get paid one way or the other, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions with regards to the motion that's on the floor?
Just, sorry.
Counselor Maynard?
Again, just on the, on the grandfathering and that 2018, so I, I understand if you had in any way, you know, rented your property out temporarily prior to 2018, that you're grandfathered, you're good to go pretty much indefinitely. But, so what about the ones that can't, or didn't come forward between 2018 and now? How do we, how, is there a mechanism for us to go back and try and have them prove? Like, will there be people that'll come and say, well, I didn't apply for a license, but, you know, in 1973? but, you know, in nineteen seventy-three, we rented this place out for the summer, you know, I'm just, I'm sorry.
Right, so for, for proof of grandfathering, we require them to show that they rented prior to twenty eighteen. Now, if someone does come and say, we're grandfathered, they have to show that not only from twenty eighteen, but they have continued to grandfather, they have continued that they, that use, or hasn't, they haven't ceased that use for two years. If they've continued it once or twice, that's okay, as long as it's continued and hasn't stopped for two year, a two-year period, but if they've continued since twenty eighteen, they're grandfathered under section thirty-four.
About the two years.
What's that?
The two years, no.
No, two years, yeah, but under section thirty-four, nine of the Plan Act, you're grandfathered.
So.
The questions are from council to staff at this point?
Right, so, in all but a very few.
It's not a public debate, that's what I'm getting at, sorry.
Other than a few exceptions, anybody that hasn't applied now for grandfathering status is, is not likely to.
From my understanding, every, every, we, majority of the licenses are grandfathered. I'd be very surprised if we, if most licenses out there that aren't licensed, aren't, are not, not grandfathered.
And this is a section where we would be looking for actual, maybe a little stronger proof than we had the first time by, by making them produce their income tax, that they had made income? Is that one of the provisions, is that where this one comes in, on the grandfathering? If somebody's trying to clear, is trying to, sorry.
Madam CAO?
Through the chair to Counselor Maynard and others on council, so it is a little bit complicated, but on the planning side, all, all the planning bylaw does is allow for the use, so whether or not you, you operate as an STA every day, you took a break for two years, for five years, it doesn't matter, you sold it, you bought it, if it was an STA as of that date, before this program came in, then you still get to be an STA. It is the licensing side that determines what rules you have to follow, and what fees you would pay for renewal, and how we would deal with you, so by putting back all the density requirements into the planning bylaw, which was done between these two meetings, we are basically going back to where we were by recognizing that if you were an STA, it doesn't matter, you still get to be an STA, and the points raised about commercial use or some of the other definitions are, are valid points and would relate to how we define things in the licensing program, because from a commercial use in the, in the planning world is that you can be, if you are a commercial building, you're a corner store, you would not be relevant, but if you have a corner store with some kind of dwelling as part of that building, usually an apartment above the, the corner store, then you would be eligible under planning to have been an STA. So that's all we're doing in the planning side, is just deciding which kinds of things and which kind of zones do STAs belong in, and recognizing that historically, if they were STAs, they still get to be STAs regardless of how many times we change all the rules. It's the licensing side where the nuance of how much you pay, what kind of, how you operate, and how you're defined, it becomes important, so that'll be in the eight point two. So this particular motion as drafted, given the conversation that's happening, I, I think is fine, it is the next one where it sounds like if you wanted to respond to the comments raised by the public tonight, you would need several amendments to the licensing bylaw.
We're satisfied, that clarifies everything for you, Counselor Maynard? Okay?
Oh, yes.
And I'm not seeing any more hands in the air, so there is a motion on the floor, it was Counselor Robertson-McMahon, right? Okay, and then I will call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Okay. So, item eight point two.
We'll take a break.
Who would like to read that motion? I need a mover and a seconder.
I'll read it.
Counselor Forrester, seconded by Counselor Bailey.
Counselor who?
Bailey.
So Forrester, Bailey motion. The council received report CSP nineteen twenty-two N, that council direct staff to place if only provisions from the comprehensive zoning bylaw into the short-term accommodation licensing bylaw. A, children under the age of ten shall not count against the overall person's limit to short-term accommodation. Notwithstanding the landscaping and use provisions of the zoning bylaw and STA use, and abuts to the residential zone and is within fifteen meters to a single dwelling unit, a privacy fence or solid landscaped screen five feet in height shall be erected or installed along the rear and interior side yard. C, STA shall have appropriate water and wastewater service, servicing for the intended use. D, all lots with STA shall provide a minimum of one onsite waste disposal container. Three, council direct staff to amend the one oh eight dash twenty twenty-one bylaw to license, regulate, and govern the operation of short-term accommodation dwelling rentals in the county of Prince Edward, as a attachment one to include: A, remove the owner occupied and whole home definitions and replace with: One, primary resident STA, which means all or part of STA in a dwelling or dwelling unit that the owner has designated as the principal residence on their income tax filing or other government documents. Two, secondary residence STA, which means an STA in which one or two dwelling units on the property are entirely occupied by accommodated guests. B, no primary residence STA rented out in its entirety shall be rented out for more than a total of one hundred and eighty nights in a calendar year. C, a natural person requirement on all new secondary resident STAs issued. D, eliminate one secondary residence STA license that can be issued per natural person to the applied of all future issued licenses. And, clarifying, E, clarifying language that confirms that, according to the Plan Act, legal non-conforming use provisions, properties that have a secondary residence STA license prior to the bylaw amendments coming into effect may, when sold to subsequent owners, be eligible for secondary resident STA license, providing that all other criteria of the licensing program be met. Four, the council direct staff to amend forty-five nineteen dash twenty nineteen bylaw to establish a system of administration penalties for non-compliance with bylaws for the county of Prince Edward. As an amendment two, to A, include penalties for failure to post STA license numbers on any STA advertisement, B, increase fines for operating an STA without a license, and C, special fines for the municipal act. Five, that the amendment to the fees and bylaw, charges bylaw be brought to a July twelfth, twenty twenty-two council meeting for approval, which would include the new STA license definitions and the related fees, and six, that staff direct short, that staff direct staff to investigate, sorry, that council direct staff to investigate incentives pertaining to accessible short-term accommodations. Is that enough?
Very well done, Counselor Forrester. Okay, now that the motion is on the floor, Emily, I guess you're up there, and you, you were obviously taking notes, a lot of the questions that were fielded by comments, now is your opportunity against, to, to address some of those.
Thank you, Chair, through you, I will do my best to answer what I can right now, or at least comment on. The, the commercial, the, the natural persons proposal as it relates to a commercial property was brought up after this report was written, but I think is, is valid and needs to be investigated, so I would perhaps recommend that we be given the opportunity to just investigate that a little bit more, and if it makes sense that you could be a corporation to own an STA in a commercial property, that, that that would be something that we could do, I would just like to do a little bit more research, and that could be added to the, the final bylaw before it goes through. It's, like I said, it sounds like it's a valid point, but I, I want to have just a little bit more of a, of a look into that. Also, something that was mentioned in a comment was about a secondary unit on an owner occupied property not, not being a hundred and eighty-day restriction, and I understand that as well, so if an owner lives in that primary residence, and they have a secondary unit that they would like to rent out all the time, and they live there all the time, to me, you are still owner occupied, and I, if council felt comfortable with that, we could add that to the definition, where an owner occupied STA, or a primary residence STA with a secondary unit could rent that secondary unit year-round, it's up to council how you feel about that. Right now, it's a hundred and eighty days for the property, so that would include a secondary unit. I don't know if that needs more clarification.
Counselor Forrester?
There's quite a few questions that got, need to be answered here. Are you suggesting that maybe we defer this a little bit, or just bring these changes directly to council prior to approving? But I'm thinking, there's a lot of things that sort of need to be tidied up here, and we want to get this right.
Through the chair.
Are you, are you sort of suggesting we defer this a little bit? Because I'd be happy to do that for another couple weeks to make, to make sure we get this right.
Madam CAO?
Through the chair to Counselor Forrester, I would recommend that council, if you are, I think there are some things that we heard that really merit some review of the bylaw, and some are administrative, and some are mechanical, and some are substantive, but I, I would also, rather than just referring, I mean, I think it would be helpful if there is support for the program changes as proposed here, that a motion, amending motion maybe come forward, that the bylaw be amended to reflect the comments heard tonight, and if there are any other amending motions related to individual members of council who are looking for other kinds of changes beyond what we may have heard from the residents, that would help us shape that, and then we would bring the bylaw forward. I'm not committing that that bylaw will come forward on the twelfth, we will need a bit more time, but we would bring just the bylaw then, with whatever changes get made, but I think an amending motion to speak to, to the comments, so that we can bring, you're not bringing back the whole report, you're bringing back the bylaw, or asking us to bring back the bylaw, and, and any other amending motions related to anything else you want us to look at, so that we get this right when it comes back.
Well, I'm just waiting to see if there's any more questions.
Yeah, oh, no, I do, I have Counselor Bailey, and then Counselor Maynard, and then Nyman and McNaughton.
Let me know when you're ready, Bill. Thank you, Chair. Emily, this is to you, and this has to do with a cap on licenses that council had been looking for. Because other communities such as Toronto, Ottawa, the city of Blue Mountain can in fact restrict or limit the number of licenses, can you explain for transparency purposes why we cannot do this in our community? This question has been brought up by a number of our constituents, and because this is such an important issue to the community, and will have a large impact on livability within our community, I think it needs to be very clear to the general public why we cannot simply put a cap on the number of licenses and stop new licenses when other communities apparently can.
Through the chair to committee, so the, the municipalities that you refer to, they, when they began their licensing program, they only created licenses for primary residence STAs. I don't want to speak blanket to all the municipalities that you mentioned, but I know Toronto has its own act, so that's a little separate to how any other municipality can, can control any sort of licensing program, but Brampton, Hamilton, Ottawa, they did not ever create a whole home or a secondary residence license, they only created a primary residence STA license. So because we have created a secondary residence STA license, we really can't arbitrarily take it away without some very good reason, and usually that's to do with safety, health and safety, or if they aren't complying to, to operating, so if they're operating without a license, for instance, you can deny them a license or revoke a license if they're operating outside of the bylaw, but we've already made this license, we've included this into the program, and it's not something you can easily arbitrarily take away. We can limit to, sorry, apologies, but I just wanted to mention as a proviso that by saying that everyone who complies to the STA bylaw license for a secondary residence STA can have only one, everyone is allowed, if they comply, to have a license, so we're not keeping that from, from them, but they can just have one, and that's, that seems to be okay under the municipal act.
Thanks, Emily, I'll have other questions after, Chair, but I'll let others go first.
Okay, Counselor Maynard, followed by Nyman and McNaughton.
So when we talk about just bringing the, the amendments back in the, in the bylaw, I don't know whether I can support that, because some of the things that may come back in the bylaw after we've approved the, you know, the basic report and stuff, and it goes through council, like, there might be some consequences, right? Like, there might be some fallout if you change one thing, I, I just don't, I really want to make sure that this time we've got a really good comprehensive view of exactly what we're doing, and what the, what the fallout or the consequences of all of those, of all of any potential changes might make, and I, I was trying to make some notes when we were having, having our, our comments, and I think there was at least four, maybe five times where they, where we're, maybe we'll consider their recommendations, that's a lot, that's not a single, you know, or just one recommendation on one tiny part of this bylaw. These are, are pretty wide-ranging recommendations or requests for further review, and I think that amongst council, once we get a chance to go around the horseshoe, that we ourselves will have some recommendations as to how, how we would like to see things play out for the, you know, for the county, so I, I really don't see how we can bring this back and pass at council the motion, and then just clean it up in a bylaw at a, at a later date. I, I don't support that way of going at it, I think we've been at this long enough, we need to stay with it long enough to, to hopefully this time get it as right as possible, and if that means a brief deferral to correct the reports, like, go through this section tonight so that we're, because really, it sounds like we're, in some ways, we're still taking consultation. If we're considering recommendations, we're still in the consultation process, and council themselves have really not had a chance yet to weigh in on the recommendations.
I don't think you were looking for a response from Emily on that, that was.
No, that was, no, that was a, yeah, well, I mean, no, I will not ask you for a response.
Okay, thank you. Questions with regards to the motion, Counselor Nyman, followed by McNaughton, and then Mayor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to go to the, the unlicensed STAs, because I thought, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the number I heard was between two hundred and five hundred STAs operating without a license. So I'm not sure if somebody can confirm that number, but if they're operating without a license, and based on what we heard, can we prevent, I, I got a motion I want to put forward when the time is right, but I'm just wondering if that's the number of unlicensed STAs, and then the fines that are there, I don't think are big enough either, so I'm just, I guess, is there a way that we can stop those unlicensed STAs from getting a license?
Through you, Chair, to committee. I'll just say that in the study that was undertaken at the end of last year, there was some speculation around how many unlicensed operators. And while it's a broad range, I wouldn't be surprised if it was 200, 300, 400. Our Hamari STA compliance software will hopefully nail that down pretty quickly, or at least start to. And I, as far as the other question is concerned, I'll just hand it over to Director McNichol.
Through the chair to committee. We actually had, I think Counsel Nyman's relating to an applicant who has been charged for operating without a license, and we are actively pursuing those individuals. We actually have had one who was charged three different times, and we've actually just sent a letter revoking their license. So they will no longer have the ability to actually get a license because they've been charged three times. So we're actually, if somebody does apply and they're charged without a license, then we will revoke their ability to apply, so.
Follow-up?
Yeah. There's not really a follow-up. I just have a motion I'd like to put forward when the time's right, and before it gets deferred, if that's kind of what I'm hearing.
If a deferral motion comes forward, I'll come back to you. How's that?
Thank you.
Counsel McNaughton, followed by Mayor Ferguson.
I don't know where to start. Thank you. There's, I, this is sort of a cautionary tale for counselors and staff of the future that make sure you get it right, take the time to get it right at the outset. You know, way, way back, we heard around the horseshoe, well, it's not perfect, but, you know, we've heard from staff, we can change it, but we've got to get this going. And it becomes very difficult to change once you're underway. It becomes convoluted and messy. I don't think the report that we have right now really nails what this past two years have been about. There are a number of, there are a number of small details that I think are really, really great, a few that can change. And I think, you know, looking at higher fines for repeat offenders, the highest, sort of looking to, to sort of see where those fines could land, that is a little bit more prohibitive, I think is a good idea, which I think is what we'll be seeing an amendment for before we do a referral. I would like to look at reducing the proposed window of days for whole-home primary residence, for whole-home primary residence rentals. So people who have a primary residence and are only renting it out temporarily from time to time to keep it palatable for neighborhoods and to keep it within the same vein as the sort of principle of home sharing, to return it to that principle and rather more than, you know, a six-month-of-the-year business. That was certainly a much higher number than I would ever have advocated and hope that council will, when the time comes, look at reducing that significantly. I like that someone brought up, and that Emily has very beautifully clarified that there is, that if it is on, that if the owners are on the property, that there should be freedom to rent as many days as you want that owners are on the property and will, are better prepared to ensure that renters are going to fit with the neighborhood better. I would like to, at some point, reconsider the entire clause related to secondary residences. I think that's contrary to all of the motions and all of the instructions from council that we've seen so far. And I am curious about some of the, some of the questions that members of the public have brought forward. I don't, I just want to caution staff those, that they are questions to be considered, not necessarily immediately adopted. But some of them are very good questions, and I would like to hear the answers as well. And I think I like the amended fines for failing to post a license. I think that's quite proper. And I would, and I think I heard that perhaps we'll be looking at a referral, and I think that's the direction that we should go. And so I'll leave the rest of my comments for now, because I think I've maxed out my three minutes.
I wasn't going to cut you off, but I was going to remind you.
Oh!
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just ask Counsel McNaughton one quick question? I just.
Sure, as long as we don't get into a debate between counselors. We need to be mindful of that.
Yeah, I just want to, what part of the secondary residence are you looking to take right out? What page was that on?
It's in the motion itself. It's the entire clause. I think it's clause D. I'm sorry, I'm reading on a very small device. Let me go back up to the top. I think it's clause D, which allows new entrance to that program. I would prefer to align the entire program to primary residence only, with the exception of existing licenses, of course.
That was, that was 3D?
Hold on. I'm just, I have to, I'm reading on my phone, so it takes a little while.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Ferguson, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to zero in on, there's been considerable discussion and question about the fines for operating an STA without a license. And when I first saw the report with the recommended increase, I thought, that, you know, for, for some of the prices that I see on Airbnb elsewhere for STA listings, this is really more of an endorsement to carry on. So I'd like to, and I don't know if the timing is right to do this now, put forward a motion to, if I can find a seconder, that the operating an STA without a license, those fees increase to $5,000, $7,500, and $10,000 across the three lines. The advertising an STA without a license be increased to $1,000, $2,000, and $4,000. Those two to begin with. I think if we're going to be harsh and bring into line those operators who are flagrantly violating the rules because they think they can get away with it, I think it's time to send them a reminder. So if I, can I have a seconder? You, Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. That amendment has been duly noted and moved and seconded.
Point of order.
Yeah?
I thought when the time was right, we would do the motions in order, and I thought I was the first one up. I'm just wondering how the process is working.
You're very much right, Counsel Nyman, but I did say before a motion to refer was brought forward, and I haven't seen a motion to refer yet, so. I'm not sure what your amendment might be.
That's okay. Go ahead with what you are. I just thought the way it has been worked is we do the motions as a, when the time is right. Go ahead.
Okay. I take it from that that your, what you were going to propose is very similar to what Mayor Ferguson just put forward.
No, it's, I'm good with him putting the fines up. That's good. I'd support that, Emily, so. But I still have a motion.
You still have yours, okay. And I won't forget you. So I now have an amendment on the floor. And the questions, questions now will be related to the amendment. Counsel Forrester.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering why we're putting motions on right now, because I think we're going to have a deferral. I think these should be recommendations for the deferral, and then we can bring it back and look at everything. Because I think we all have things that we'd like to see changed, but any of these motions can be changed at council anyway, so. They should just be recommendations right now.
Okay. Hearing that comment from Counsel Forrester, I'll go back to the mover and seconder, what you wish to do.
If this is referred, then this would convert to a recommendation, actually a strong recommendation.
Exactly.
Okay. Mover and seconder concur, so that amendment's off the table. Okay. Counselor Margatson.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I was just going to add to Emily, on the recommendation list, your commercial, your investigation of the commercial natural persons and the issue of the secondary residence part that came up from Mr. Elliott. And I feel we've dealt with the grandfathering. Most of the grandfather would be licensed now, so the performance, meeting the performance standards at the reissuance of a license should not be an issue.
Through the chair to Counsel Margatson. So as proposed in this bylaw right now, the only things that are moving over would be privacy fencing.
Right. Yeah. But otherwise, the performance standards are already being met.
Yes.
Let's say if they're licensed.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes. Sorry, I understand what you're saying. They've already been eligible and complied for a license at that time, yeah.
Because that's one of the comments, or a few of the comments we received. We dealt with the grandfathering. I feel we've dealt with the performance standards going forward, so thank you. Just the recommendation on the commercial. I'll wait to see where, and the other thing, Emily, I agree that you should review the secondary suite contained within a principal residence not being restricted on the number of days. I can see the validity of that argument of that being eligible for a longer rental period, so that would be another one that I would add to the list. And then I'll wait to see where we go with the 180 days, because I have a feeling that's too long. I'm thinking more like two to three months, but I'd like to hear if anybody has any rationale to defend a number there. So thank you.
Did you have anything you wish to add, Director Cowan? No?
Through the chair, they're on my list.
Okay. And that list is getting quite long, possible.
Thank you.
Changes, okay. Sir, anyone else before I go to Counsel Nyman?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, I'm going to call this round two, starting with Counsel Maynard, following up with Counsel Bailey, and then I'm going to go to Counsel Nyman.
And now that we are, I would say we're in the phase of making some recommendations for review as opposed to trying to craft motions on the fly. I would also, I believe it's 4.372, the one on the 180 days. I mean, we understand that the existing STAs will not likely ever again be affordable housing, but it's a downward pressure as we get more that makes this county less livable. The pressure that then pushes people to make the lower-priced houses, you know, it's just, to me, it's not sustainable. And I think that 180 days, if you are, if it's your principal residence, I mean, that's a half, that's a half a year, so that's not, that's not a season. I think that somewhere in the vicinity of, if it's your principal residence, 45 to 60 days. So I think Counsel Margatson, although we haven't discussed it, it's somewhere in that, in that range where you could, you know, go stay in a trailer or go stay with family or whatever while you made some extra money. The other one is on the density, because we've been told, although other municipalities do regulate or cap their, the number of STAs, because we kind of started this early and, you know, maybe we're unsure of our footing, that the only way now that we can keep our, some of our neighborhoods that have not reached their density capacity to save them from dark neighborhoods is by lowering those density limits. So I would like to have staff look at, and the, we can leave the distances, I think, the same, because to try and redo that might be quite difficult. But right now, we have a 15% density, and especially in the, I would say, in some of the villages and hamlets to drop that down somewhere in the vicinity of 5%. So if you've got a hamlet that's got 30 houses, right, you're not going to, you know, it'll, it'll help save some of those, some of those, make them more livable for a longer period of time. So I think those are the two ways that we can try and mitigate the impacts, the clear impacts at STAs, although they have brought some good impacts, but the clear negative impacts that the STAs have brought to our, to our community. It's by the lowering of those days and lowering the density limits. Just add that to the list.
Got it on your list, Emily. Good. Counselor Bailey.
Thank you, Chair. Fast comment before I do my question, and it's to the Mr. Roberts' proposal. I would suggest that we look at, if somebody's operating illegally, don't, illegally, don't just fine them. If they apply for a license, refuse them. Tell them they can't have, that's, again, that's to do with my thought when we're going to look at that motion. My question, for Emily, is, on page eight of the report, which is page 41 on the agenda, under proposed changes related to the number of licenses allowed per license fee, it states that if approved going forward, a natural person may only, may have only one secondary residence STA license linked to their name and primary residence. The reason I ask these questions is I have a concern about gaming the system. So with this in mind, I have two questions. Do you have to own a primary residence in the county in order to get a secondary residence license? And will there be any way to cross-check whether there is only one secondary license per primary residence? My reason for asking this is that there's a concept in finance called the beneficial owner. This is a person who enjoys the benefits of ownership even though the title to some form of property is in another name. In this instance, properties could easily be put into the names of various relatives, family members, and so on, when in fact one person is the actual owner and is benefiting from ownership of this. How would we track this to keep this from happening?
Good luck, Emily.
Through the chair to Counselor.
I can repeat it.
Through the chair to Counsel Bailey. My immediate thought is that you're applying for a license that is not for your primary residence. It's for a secondary residence, and you can only have one. So I'm sure there's ways to game most systems these days. I would like to think that we're honing in on trying to make it fair and strong enough to stand up to as much of it as possible. But if you buy a second home in Prince Edward County, whether you live here or not, I don't believe that we can restrict it to being owned by someone who is a resident of the county. I believe we've checked on that before, and I will double-check again. But if it's a second home, and they're allowed to have one license if they meet density and if they comply to every other provision in the STA bylaw.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Nyman. I promised you I'd come back to you, and I am right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So are we making motions or are we just suggesting things?
I believe it's been a list of suggestions at this point. If you have a suggestion, I'm sure Emily would love to hear it.
Okay, so I have a quick question then before the suggestion instead of the motion. So the question is, so this will be put into the bylaw, or? Or how, how's that work? I'm just trying to follow it along now, because if you wanted something in there, you had to pass a motion. to pass a motion, now we're suggesting stuff, so I'm just trying to figure stuff out.
Madam CAO?
So I'm writing down what I think your suggestions are, I strongly urge you to either provide, I leave it to the clerk to decide whether that's a motion with the list of suggestions itemized, or whether the minutes are fine, but I'm going to read them, but when this is all over, to make sure we are all clear on what we are changing this bylaw, because we cannot bring another report with options and ideas, we need direction in order to get this through. So I would say to Counselor Nyman, we will come back with, if you refer this report, we will come back with another report that identifies, that starts with the bylaw you see today, and suggests alternate wording to achieve the things that we think you want, and we will, then at that point, additional amendments could be made to the bylaw. So we will hold back the planning bylaw that you've already approved at this special meeting, so they come together, but we would bring back another report if you refer this with a bunch of changes off of this version of the bylaw, for your review and approval.
So, if I understand, we should make a motion, or in order to get it in there, is what I'm hearing, right?
Through the chair, Counselor Nyman, you just need to be clear what you're trying to achieve, then I'm going to read back what I think everybody wants, and the clerk can tell us whether or not that's a motion to refer in the minutes, tell us, or the motion to refer with a list.
Okay.
Okay, so then, just so I'm clear then, so the motion that the mayor put on is not really a motion, that's a suggestion?
It's been withdrawn.
It's been withdrawn. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to interject here, Madam CAO and Deputy Clerk, are you going to need a few minutes here to?
So we have compiled the list of the items that you would like to be reconsidered or reviewed once more, so Marcia and I could read it out loud, and if you'd like to add more to that list, you may do so, but any direction should be provided by motion to staff.
Okay. Given that we are past the two-hour mark, procedure by law states we take a 10-minute break, I want to give staff the opportunity to get everything exactly the way it needs to be, so I'm going to call a 10-minute recess. We will be back at 8:22.
So Mr.
Madam CAO and Deputy Clerk have a suggested motion, that I'm going to throw this over to the clerk, Deputy Clerk, to please read the suggested motion, and I believe CAO Wallace will have some commentary, before I ask for a mover and seconder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so this is a referral motion that clause 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 be deleted and replaced with the following, that staff report CSPI 19/2022 be referred to staff to investigate the following, higher fines, penalties, stronger restrictions on licensed operators, reduce the 180-day limit for partial primary residence SDA to 45 to 60 days, allowing primary residences with secondary units to operate year-round, flexibility for commercial properties, and removing natural persons restrictions, and the removal of secondary residence STAs, and that council direct staff to bring back a revised bylaw.
Okay, and council members, that has been emailed to you, so that you can see the actual wording, I'll give everybody a moment to bring that up and have a look at it. That looks pretty good. Okay, I think everybody's had a chance to read that, before I take questions, is there anything that you would like to add, Madam CAO?
Thank you, Chair, to council, I just remind, the language is that staff will investigate, so we're not taking this as a motion of direction, but that we are, if we, if we find that there's a slight change to this that is a better way to accomplish what we think you're asking, then it, we will come back with that, and so it might not be exactly as worded, but if this is the intention that you're looking for, then this is what we will attempt to replicate in the next version of the bylaw.
Okay, now, I had promised Counselor Nyman, first shot, so Counselor Nyman, followed by Counselor Prinzen, Counselor McNaughton, and I'm not sure if Counselor Bailey still wanted in or not. Nope, okay, so there's the three, and then Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for coming back, gave me the first opportunity. So I think what's here will cover the motion that I wanted to put forward, it was the stronger restrictions on unlicensed operators is what I was going to put forward, and it's already in this motion here, so I'll wait to see when it comes back. Just a quick question to staff then, is when do you think this will be back?
Will this be coming back to council on the 12th?
Through council, or through the chair to Counselor Nyman, so it was intended to come back on the 12th, but the agenda is expected to be published. Oh, it has been published, so, yeah, it's not going to make it for next, the 12th. So it would come back on the August?
I believe August 14th?
August 14th, meaning if it went back to council, but given the amount of interest in this file, I would be asking the mayor to set up a special meeting, so that we could take this forward prior to the last council meeting in August.
And that would be a single item agenda?
Committee of the whole?
It would be in either late July or early August, sometime before that, it would be another special committee of the whole, so that we could then have it ratified at the August 15th council meeting. so that we could then have it ratified at the August fifteenth council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So we all understand the timing of it. Okay, Counselor Prinzen followed by McNaughton and Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to staff for these items. I just, I worry, you know what's gonna happen, and I can see it already, is you're gonna be investigating, it's gonna come back to committee of the whole, like, I don't remember number six being on there, so I don't know where it came from, and I've had conversations with my fellow counselor, and he doesn't remember either, so that makes two of us. But anyways, I'm just, I'm just worried. What's, it would be really, really nice is we as council could just approve a staff report, but I don't know how we're gonna get there when there's as many of us sitting around with all different ideas. So I, I just look for direction or something, so we're not sitting there in, in August have another referral, 'cause that's the last thing I wanna do.
Madam CAO?
Through, through the chair to Counselor Prinzen, I, I completely agree with that. So I would suggest that if there's any of these bullets that you don't think we should be going down that direction, I think that they are, there's enough flexibility in the wording here so that there's, for example, the commercial one, there's lots of different ways to, to fix what we think we heard, and, but if everybody agrees that we are trying to allow for flexibility for commercial properties to operate, then I think that we can get there, we can provide some revisions and, and we'll be fine. But if there's anything on this list that the group disagrees with, it would be helpful to take it off, because that is what, all of this is gonna be a lot of work to craft, and, and I think as close to a common group understanding of what you want us to do will improve our chances of getting a, a bylaw version that you're all comfortable with next time.
Follow-up?
So, thank you for that explanation. Are you recommending that we divide this into one to six and vote on it, whether that or how? I don't wanna make any, any more work for anybody, but I wanna make this end.
Madam Deputy Clerk?
If that's council's wish, yes, of course. I, I don't know how else to, how else we could do this and get a, a majority confirmation of the items that will be investigated.
Okay.
Or it, the motion's not on the floor yet, so if someone would like to put the deferral mo, a referral motion on the floor, and then someone else could make an amending motion to that amendment.
Okay, I'm going to take the Deputy Clerk's recommendation here, and I'm going to ask for a mover and secondor for this motion as. Okay. I do have you on my list, Bill. Okay, I'm going to, I'm gonna take your recommendation, Counselor Prinzen, and I'm going to continue down to the list, ending with Counselor Roberts, and then I will ask for this motion to be put on the floor. Okay, Counselor McNaughton, followed by Counselor Maynard, and then Counselor Roberts. Counselor Prinzen is correct, we do need to come to a conclusion here.
Thank you. I was also gonna suggest that we do some sort of straw polling, or that we investig, or that, or whether we actually vote on each to determine whether there's interest in seeing each item investigated. Obviously, it was, it would just be a staff investigation if, if there is support, not necessarily automatic inclusion. I also wanted to answer Counselor Prinzen's query where the number six came from. I think that came from me, because I was proposing that primary residency be considered a qualifying condition of all further, all further whole home, which are no, well, that primary residency be a condition of the entire program going forward. Which might be better worded.
Okay, Counselor May, Counselor Maynard followed by Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. Well, I understand that the density, because it was partly in the zoning and then I, and, but it was mentioned in the other report that that may be problematic, but I would still, and it may mean that, that has to get to, that will have to be discussed separately at council now, but I would still like some investigation on how density could be potentially used if we can undo what we just did with the, with the planning zoning part of the, the bylaw. So just some, what I'm looking for is just for staff to, to have the ability to make some comments on how we can, how we can use, how we can use any form of density calculations to. So, and I'm not looking for those comments now, I'm just looking for it to, to be kind of added to those, because it's a, it's a two-parter, right? Yes, it was in the, it was in the zoning bylaw, so we're not actually putting this in now, but all we're doing is saying that, you know, from the, from this side of it to, to investigate, and that'll inform my decision when we get to the next council meeting.
So, can, can I jump in here?
Yes.
Okay, so I, so again, I would recommend that if there's no unanimous consent on the list of items that you would like to investigate, you put the defer, referral motion on the floor, and then talk about the referral motion, and Counselor Maynard, if you'd like to bring forward a second amendment to the amending motion to add or remove an item, you can do so with, by moving it and then finding a secondor, and the same thing, if you'd like to change one of the, the items or rephrase it, then you may put it on the floor and find a secondor and vote on it.
May I, just for clarification, it, because this is draft wording and the motion, we haven't decided on the motion, if the mover and secondor would take that as a friendly, just to add it as a, to, as a consideration to be investigated, was it just densities, how we?
Okay, since I don't have a mover and secondor yet, that's a suggestion to whoever is going to move and secondor.
Right, I mean, it's not even technically on the floor, so I mean, this is a, this is kind of an evolving list, and I, I understand why staff wants to use the word investigate, but some of these things, I think, are, how do we say investigate with, because some of these things are direction, yeah, some of this is more direction than it is just a request for some more information, but I guess we'll. And my, my final comment is, the last thing I wanna do is to not get this right this time, and if it takes a little extra time to do it, then that's what we, that's what we need to, that's what we need to do, in my humble opinion.
Okay, Counselor Roberts, and then, or, Counselor Margitson, you'll be the last one, 'cause I, I think we need to make some progress here. Oh, sorry, I'm always defer to the, to the mayor. Anyways, Counselor Roberts, go ahead.
Quick ease, I think, I think I know what's going on, but I just wanna check with the CAO. So in item numbers, one, higher fines, and two, stronger restrictions, that could include, and may well include, permanent ineligible for the unlicensed party to actually acquire a license.
That is correct. Right now, the bylaw has flexibility for staff, but that could be a prohibition.
My second query was about density, because earlier Counselor Maynard spoke to it, and then it wasn't here, there's still, I guess that's covered now, is it?
So through the chair, the reason we did not include it is because this is a list of things that would be amending the licensing bylaw, 'cause we are on item eight point two. The density issue is related to the previous item, but I take Counselor Maynard's point about if we don't do the work to investigate it, then it, it, it doesn't. I would recommend with the deputy clerk's concurrence, it be a completely separate motion, not in this list, because this list is about the licensing bylaw, and then we can have a separate vote if we are coming back, because that would eventually change the, the previous decision you've already made.
That's perfect, and my last little query was, just think, trying to understand, I didn't understand what removal of secondary residence SDAs meant. Counselor May, Counselor McNaughton clarified that, but that's a really big thing. I mean, to, that's not just an item six, in my view. I mean, eliminating all whole home SDAs going forward is a big item. Does that require a little discussion? I mean, I'll just leave it there at that, that's, I mean, I would support it, but it's a big discussion.
It's a big shift. Okay, Counselor Margitson, and then Mayor Ferguson.
Thank, thanks, Mr. Chair, and Counselor Roberts covered stronger restrictions, which was discussed the other night, again, brought up tonight, which may go with the property. I don't remember having much of a discussion on the secondary residence SDA removal tonight. I don't even remember it coming up, but I might have missed it, there's been a lot of discussion. It was brought up by a counselor, I presume, not, not from the audience.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with the list myself, thank you.
Mayor Ferguson, final word to you.
Thank you, I just, I agree with the list, too. The, the CAO and staff agonized this, agonized over this, over the break, and these are the key things that we have, we have heard this evening, and we've heard before. I guess a question might be, is there anything we need to add to this? 'Cause I'm satisfied with, with the work that's been put into formulating this list, but I think let's, let's get the thing done so we can get on with the work, bring it back to, for due consideration, committee of the whole, and then get this finalized. We've been dealing with this for months and months and months.
Would you like to make a motion, sir?
I will make the motion that, do we have draft wording?
It was, it was the one that I read out.
Okay, so this is, I need a secondor, that's Counselor Roberts, that clause two, three, four, five, six be deleted and replaced with the following, that staff report CSPI nineteen dash two thousand twenty-two be referred to staff to investigate the following, higher fines, penalties, stronger restrictions on unlicensed operators, reduce the hundred and eighty day limit for partial primary residence SDA to forty-five to sixty days, allowing primary residences with secondary units to operate year-round, flexibility for commercial properties and removing natural persons restrictions, removal of secondary residence SDAs, and that staff bring back a revised bylaw.
Do we need to add a date to that, that motion, that it will be brought back?
Madam CAO?
Well, through, through the mayor, you're the only one who can call a meeting, and I recommend it be a special meeting, so.
At the call of the mayor.
It's your motion.
Okay, then I, then that staff bring back a revised bylaw at a special of the committee of the whole meeting, the date to be determined at the will of the mayor. Does that work? But it's gonna be soon.
Or August?
Yeah, cool, I think I confer with.
Or you could just say prior to the August council meeting.
Yeah, would, okay, then prior to the, that works, prior to the August council meeting.
Okay, what she's, exactly. Okay, now that I have a motion on the floor, I do see one hand in the air, Counselor McNaughton?
Can I ask if the motion now be broken apart?
I won't agree with that.
She wants to bring it apart.
Well, only to give staff more feedback about, it, it's good as is, and, but to give staff more feedback directly. And I'm not gonna, like, I'm not gonna hold my right if, if, if people want it to go as a whole without discussing further, without further amendments, that's fine, but it seems to me that staff would like as much guidance as possible.
I.
I'm gonna leave this up to the mover and secondor to decide if they want to break it apart.
I will, I will ask the staff members.
Can I call a court of order? Can I call a court of order?
Yes, Mr. Nyman, Counselor Nyman.
Thank you. I think if any member of council wants it separated, they need to put a motion on the floor, and council will decide the direction. So that's, that's the proper way to do it.
I think anyone can request it be split apart without a secondor.
But if. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Deputy Clerk.
So under section twelve point three of the procedural bylaw, a motion containing two or more distinct proposals can, may be divided at the request of a member, and each part considered separately. So what Counselor McNaughton's asking is valid.
Okay, Counselor McNaughton, are you putting forward a motion, an amending motion to the motion that's on the floor?
I'm, I'm not going to hold to separating it, I, that's.
Not an amending motion.
No, it is not. What I'm going to suggest is, if staff want more clarification, that, 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 if they wanna see where this, because we, we can't do a straw poll, if they wanna see where council, where council wants to provide advice, then, direct advice, then we can go ahead and separate it, we don't have to, and I'm not going to adhere to that. I'm, I'm wondering if that's helpful or not.
I will ask Madam CAO and the pertinent staff, would it be helpful?
So.
Do you need more direction, sorry?
Intensity of how much you like either one of these bullets is not helpful. Knowing whether or not the majority will support them, if we can remove anything, I'm all for that. So if there's anything that there isn't support for, we won't investigate, that would be helpful. But just knowing how much you like them isn't helpful.
Okay.
Okay, so, so we could discuss it as a whole then, and people can, I, I will withdraw my request, and people can discuss it as a whole.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion that is on the floor, and it is a motion to refer?
And it's for clarification only, very quickly.
And for clarification only, Counselor Maynard?
Yes, just the final clause where it says that bring back a revised bylaw, I would assume that that would have a report attached to it, if we could just insert the, and if, if it's a friendly, that bring back a report and the corresponding revised, or, and a revised bylaw, just so that we're not gonna, 'cause bylaws are pretty tough to, without a report. I'm assuming that was the intent.
Mover and secondor, okay with that? Okay, Counselor Prinzen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, remember back in the early discussions, we weren't allowed to restrict, and what we're allowed in, following up on the CAO's looking for removal of stuff, if I can get a secondor, I will propose we remove, the removal of secondary residence SDAs, as I don't believe we are allowed legally to tell people what they can and can't do with the property. So if we can get a secondor and it gets support, that's good.
Counselor Nyman?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, so I have an amending motion on the floor, amending the referral motion. If anybody has any questions for clarification, no, then I'll.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry, yeah, I'm just saying, so the question would be from staff, I'm assuming that they would not have put that on the list if it was not, if it, if there was no chance that we, upon investigation, that anything would, could potentially.
So everything on this list is what we heard members of council suggest as recommendations. We are not waiting any of these at this point, and so, and that's why I tried to emphasize that the, this is about investigating, so. So I, we're not taking a position as to whether or not we agree with any of this. We're, but council has the right to tell staff what to create in a bylaw. So if that's what you want, then we will figure out how to do that.
It's just investigated.
Okay. For clarification, Counselor McNaughton?
Just regarding that comment, we, we have not fully exacerbated the options on that. This was, and it speaks to what the entire process and the entire pause is, is hoping to consider. So this is one that's particularly important to consider. The wording's a little clunky as presented, perhaps, but it should be fully considered, and I believe it's generally what the public wants. So, so at least it bears proper consideration before it gets eliminated, it's significant.
Okay. Is there, are there any other questions for clarification on the amending motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, then I'm going to call Counselor Prinsen and Nyman's motion. All in favor? And I see, I have three hands in the air, so that motion, the amending motion loses. So we are back to the main motion, which is a motion to refer as previously read, and I'm going to call that motion now. All in favor? And that carries. Okay.
I'm going to...
You're ready to make the next motion? Counselor Maynard?
Well, because I don't like drafting motions on the fly, I'm going, I think staff had the intent, if they could, if they could help with a motion, to just investigate the use of reduced densities for STAs. We'll, we'll make it simple, and that will then allow them to, just to investigate the reduced densities for STAs.
And I need a seconder for that motion. Counselor Roberts. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That carries. Okay. So that brings us to...
Mr. Chair, the main motion.
The main motion, yes, that's where, where I'm headed next. So the main motion as amended, and I'm going to call the motion, all in favor.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
And that carries. Okay. So now that we finally got to the end of the agenda, who would like the honor of making the motion to adjourn?
I'll do that for you.
Counselor Prinsen, seconded by Counselor Roberts. Undebatable, all in favor.
Don't I even get to read it?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just getting ahead of everybody, because we've been debating so much tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, it's a Prinsen-Roberts motion that this special, special committee of the whole meeting now adjourn at 8:53.
Okay. All in favor. That is carried. Thank you, everyone, thank you, staff, for everything you did tonight.
Nicely done, Phil.